A candidate for the Ward Two, open Ward Two, a seat. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And one post to present my reasons, please, Matthew.
Matt? Oh, boy, you're taking me off guard. All right, one second. Normally, we only do these for Wednesday meetings, but.
We could just recite the pleasure of this. Pleasure, ladies and the flag, United States of America. Thank you. So I'd like to take a roll call, please. Mute it.
I'll be taking care of that for you today, Mayor.
Mine's grinding marbles.
Must be Matt in his office.
That's probably the sound of my tea water boiling.
Oh.
It was councillor Novak.
Sorry, I unmuted for roll call.
Okay, councillor, councillor Novak?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Here, Bessie Johnson?
Here.
All councillors are present, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Holly. So again, today, we're here to interview the candidates. I've asked the city manager to give us a pre-interview discussion. So Peter, you have the floor. Unmute, please.
That elusive mute button. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, and thank you for joining us as we work to identify our new city councillor for Ward Two. We have four excellent candidates to interview today. For you all, you council members to interview, and we're very much looking forward to hearing from them in this process. A bit about the proceedings. All of these proceedings will be held in open session in accordance with public meetings law. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and Facebook page, and will be recorded for later viewing on the city's website. You will conduct interviews, you'll deliberate, and you'll make a decision. And hopefully, we'll be able to do all of that in tonight's session. Each applicant has been scheduled for 40 minutes with a short five-minute pause between interviews to allow the council time to finish up your notes, take a quick break, and make sure that you have the next applicant connected and ready to start on time. The council will ask the same questions of all applicants. Our four candidates received those questions yesterday afternoon to be able to prepare for their interview. Candidates have been asked to refrain from joining the virtual meeting until their scheduled interview time and to avoid watching the proceedings on the city's livestream until after they've been interviewed. This is an effort to provide a level playing field for all applicants. After the final interview, council will have time for discussion and deliberations. If you can identify your successful candidate this evening, the individual selected will be sworn in by the city clerk tomorrow. I want to, personally, I want to close this introduction with words of encouragement and gratitude for all of the applicants. Those who aren't ultimately selected to join the council on the dais, I would encourage you to stay involved in our local government and participate through our various citizen advisory positions and through our local elections process. And I commend you for your willingness to take part in these interviews, and all of us greatly appreciate your readiness to serve our community. And Mayor, with that, I'll turn it over back to you.
So thank you very much, Peter. I'd like to echo what Peter said. We definitely encourage you to get involved in our citizens advisory groups and commissions, and also for being willing to step up and take part or participate in our local government. So with that, our first candidate, I see she is in the room. So Stacy Bartholomew. Are you ready?
Can you see me and hear me?
I can hear you, we cannot see you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
So can you tell us who you are and how long you've lived in the city of Albany?
My name is Stacy Bartholomew, and I've lived in Albany since 2013.
Great to hear that, thank you. And so the council is going to start our interview questions. We have 50, 45 minutes, was that correct? You have 45 minutes to conduct the interview. And at the end, we'll give you an opportunity to ask questions of us if you'll so choose to do so. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. And as decision makers, we should have all have a vision for how Albany and the Mid-Valley will look for the next 10 to 15 years. It takes commitment to achieve a vision of great neighborhoods, quality water, a healthy environment, and strong economy. It takes strong connections and relationships with our business community and nonprofit agencies. Should local government foster economic growth? And how would you engage the business community to achieve economic growth?
Thank you, Alex. You know, local government is in the business of fostering economic growth because we have many of our government bodies engaging in just that kind of business support. We have CARA, we have the Albany Visitors Association, we have the Planning Commission, Downtown Albany Association, and the Chamber. And in addition, there are other bodies that are civic groups, like Rotary, Optimists, Seroptimists, PEO, Lions, Fraternal Order of the Eagles, and various nonprofits. Each of these groups allow neighbors from all over the city to engage in public good. And just from that list, you can see how many and diverse we are. And I see government as the facilitator. So coming from a mental health training background, I facilitated many different groups of individuals. The job of the facilitator is to help people within a group setting meet their individual needs more effectively. Facilitator must understand all the different needs, understand those needs can be met within the given environment, and guide people to the resources available within and without the group. As a facilitator, I was the leader who protected the rights of those of those that were in the group, as well as I challenged the group individually and collectively to risk temporary discomfort for future gain. I also know that I didn't know all the answers, but I knew that I, that those I led, they did have answers. They had ideas and potential. I trust in our ability to problem solve and engage productively and to come together for the common good of our community. The act of creating a nonprofit with a vision of creating a different kind of housing opportunity to improve the lives of the most vulnerable in our community and thereby improve the lives of all residents of Albany, it takes vision and commitments. And I bring that to this service opportunity. Because you see, I have tenacity.
Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Yeah. Stacy, what brought you to Albany? What do you like living, about living here? And how does your experience in Albany align with the city's mission and vision statements?
Marilyn, I really love these questions. First work brought me to Albany. I lived in Corvallis, and I worked here. I was able to find a good home in a good neighborhood six and a half years ago, and I have the best little cul-de-sac in Albany. I love my home and neighbors and the life I've built here. I have to admit, you know, I was a little intimidated to come to Albany because, see, I'm a gay woman. But I soon found people to be pretty accepting once they got used to me. I like the realness of people here. And that's the biggest part of Albany, is the culture of Albany, that we are real. The only thing I miss about Corvallis is the hills and hiking trails. It's flatter in Albany and easier to bike around, but I want it to be safer to bike. Because we go to the effort of teaching our kids bike safety, and our town could be a lot friendlier and safer for bikes and for our kids. And as Alex and Ray know, I live in a food desert where I live, and a grocery store near me is sorely needed. For the mission and vision, from the start, I noticed that Albany does a very good job in the quality of service compared to other places I have lived. I say the city workers are some of the best I've encountered because they know their jobs, and they're really kind. I know this is not everyone's experience, but I think that we have quality people to help us strive towards our vision, to create a vital and diverse community that promotes a high quality of life. And that means meeting the basic needs of our residents as a community and enhancing all of our lives. When people can get their basic needs of food, shelter, and dignity, they are better citizens. When we treat youth like valuable humans that are vital to our community, they have purpose and contribute. I could go on, but, you know, we have more questions.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Olson, thank you, thank you very much, Stacy. Councillor Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. And hi, Stacy. And why do you want to be a city councillor? And beyond that, why would your residents in your ward vote for you? And why should we choose you to be on our council?
You know, thank you, Dick. I'm gonna adjust that. I guess they would vote for me because they know me. I'm not really good at self-promotion, it's not easy for me. I like to let my actions speak louder than my words, but I try to be a good neighbor, and I look out for my neighbors. And Janelle Armstrong, who's 93, who lives around the corner, I check in on her every once in a while. And I work to build community. This year, my neighbors were a little sad because we didn't get to have the annual Christmas party at the Bartholomew House because of COVID. And I believe strongly in community, in great neighborhoods, and I act like it. I started a nonprofit to do just that, and I believe that we can create wonderful things with the right tools and the right people and innovative ideas. And we can do it together. That's maybe why people would choose me, and that is definitely why you should choose me, Dick.
Thank you.
Now councillor Matilda Novak?
Hi, Stacy. What do you, hi, what do you consider to be the top three issues facing Albany? And what steps would you take to address them?
First, I'm going to give a good example, because housing is a huge issue. And I started a nonprofit to create a different kind of housing. I secured a grant to help with the groundwork and build partnerships with government, nonprofits, and businesses to move forward on this issue. That's the first example. The next issue is economy or the budget, and that's always an issue everywhere you go. Some of our business really struggled this year, and that had a big impact on our community. So we, like, we lost 56 good jobs at ATI. And those were living wage jobs. And then there is the limiting capacity of how our general fund is mostly based on property taxes that are capped at 3%, and our expenses are growing at 6%. I'm very willing to learn and willing to look deeply at the aspects of, you know, some choices as we try to make good decisions that will be for the most good for most people. And the last one is growth. Overall, we need to make sure we balance industrial, commercial growth, and residential needs. I would, you know, be willing to utilize and challenge all of us as a city council to utilize our growth and needs assessment studies that was conducted in 2019, deeply study it, solicit ideas and questions from our city workers and from each other, and understand the dynamics of our community. Then research other cities and their innovations, generate and compare various ideas for implementation, make sure that they align with our values and goals, assess our capacity, make a choice, fund it, and keep the faith. You know, you have to have that tenacity. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Kupczynski, thank you very much, Stacy. Councillor Kupczynski, please.
Good evening, Stacy, welcome.
Thank you, Ray.
What would you do, what do you believe is the best way to finish the urban renewals in District CARA program?
Well, you know, the thing that I didn't understand was what it meant to finish it, because I thought that it was, you know, a continuous program. But I think if we clean up and put more housing in the downtown area, because in the old St. Francis Hotel, we bring vitality to the downtown. People who live downtown love it, and downtown is a great place to live and to play because of all the resources that we have available. And whenever we can increase housing and at the same time restore community structures, that's a win-win. And that attracts people and businesses to Albany. And then there's the waterfront renovation that's planned. It would repair and protect our riverfront, as well as make it safer and more attractive and usable. I know that we can't put all our money into just a few blocks of downtown, so if we have the ability, we need to leverage whatever we have available in addition to improve, you know, affordable housing situation.
Thank you.
Councillor Johnson, thank you very much, Stacy. Councillor Johnson?
All right, all right. Hi, Stacy, nice to have you with us.
Hi, Bessie, nice to be here.
Okay. Do you feel it would be beneficial for the council to have annual joint meetings with the Chamber, the Downtown Association, Albany Visitors Association, the public schools, and any other applicable organizations to get their views and ideas regarding what's happening in Albany?
I, Bessie, I thought we were already having representatives from the city council engaging with those groups and, you know, being informed. I think that's important, that we are connected to what is happening in in our city, because if we don't know what's happening, how can we effectively govern? And I think beyond what you've mentioned in the list, there are other groups that we need to keep in touch with, we need to be in connection with to help us make our community work better. Because a community that works together works better.
Great, thank you.
Alex, you need to unmute yourself?
Okay, sorry about that. Somebody has a call, can you, everyone mute except for myself, the person speaking, and the candidate? Thank you. As a city councillor, you will be required to make decisions on a wide variety of topics that affect the citizens of Albany. What relationships, resources, or tools will you rely upon to help you develop and formulate decisions?
You're one of those relationships, Alex, and the rest of the city council, of course. Outside of you sweet folks, I would solicit people from my neighborhood. I, my relationship with Melissa Goff and Marsha Harden. I would talk to my children. They are very insightful. Church communities, I would research on the internet. I did that to prepare for this interview. I love the librarians because they might think of something I wouldn't think of. And city employees, of course, they are a huge resource and why. And they're amazing, so I would use them very much to help me to prepare and to inform my decisions. One thing that I do as a personal tool is I also meditate, and that helps to focus my mind and body. And it helps to, by doing that, I can take in information better. I can make wiser choices, hopefully. And, and as, you know, some of my answers to Matilda's questions, I work to inform and understand through using available resources and prepare the ground of my understanding for innovation. Because it's just so important that we be thoughtful in our decisions, in our decision making.
Thank you very much for that answer, I appreciate it. And councillor Smith? You're next up.
Yes, thank you. Albany's population continues to evolve. How could city government better connect with traditionally underrepresented individuals or groups to make Albany more welcoming and inclusive?
Thank you, Marilyn. I think that the Human Relations Commission's mission is to advance this issue. And they have been making this community friendlier by the year. We've had lots of wonderful organizations that engage daily with diverse folks, and listening to their ideas about what the needs are is another avenue to connect with the community. I also strongly believe that if we have more diverse housing options, we create a more inviting community. One thing that would help to make city council more inviting, besides this time change that you, that you're implementing, I like that, is is maybe having a translator for city council meetings so that people can access the civic process in Spanish as well as English.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Councillor Olson, you're up, sir.
Okay, yes. What is your opinion and experience in dealing with Oregon's land use laws? And what importance would you put on the city's land use planning efforts?
This is a question of the night, Dick. This is more extensive than I have time to answer, of course, in this interview, but I will touch on, you know, it briefly. In my work with my nonprofit and with my employment through Albany Area Habitat for Humanity, the land use laws have come into play. Wetlands, urban growth boundaries, density zoning permitting processes. The city needs to examine this and work with residents, nonprofits, and, yes, developers, especially nonprofit developers, to make wise decisions with urban growth boundaries, private-public green space ratios, industrial, commercial zones, because, you know, we can't produce more land. So we need to be incredibly wise with our land and how we choose to use it and care for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the answers, Stacy. Councillor Novak, you're next up.
Thank you. As a city councillor, you're representing all citizens in your ward, citizens who have a range of backgrounds, positions, and viewpoints on city business. How does your background and life experience help you in dealing with individuals who may see things differently than you?
I've raised four children, two that are in the Gap School District now, teenagers. And they are a great preparation for dealing with those who don't always agree with me. I also was trained and work as a councillor, which means I'm generally a good listener. And I'm trained to hear the need behind the words. So we're all trying to get our needs met, and if we respect the right in each other, we can find common ground to build on. And I practice meditation, which teaches me to be present and nonjudgmental with my own experience. And that makes room for other people to have their own experiences and opinions without causing, you know, too much reaction in me. And I live by the motto, seek first to understand and then to be understood. See, I have some friends who are particularly good at that, and they helped me to do better. And one more thing, I'm kind of big on accountability. And I was having a discussion with Marsha Harden today, and she also brought that token of accountability up, and I was like, we bonded. I'm, I'm, it's not just accountability for others, but myself. I have not always made good decisions in my life, you know, but I've taken accountability, and I've made repairs when possible. And in situations where people are struggling, we need to help them be accountable by setting certain ground rules for interaction and reminding each other, because that's a way of caring about others. Because, see, you know, we thrive best when we have clear, thoughtful boundaries. So I really appreciated this question tonight, Matilda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stacy, for your answer, responses. And the next would be councillor Kupczynski's back up.
Stacy, please touch on your experience or understanding of public sector budgeting and financial planning. Albany's income isn't keeping up with expenses, and the city has already made many service level cuts and expects to make more. Would you support a utility fee for additional revenue as other cities in Oregon have done?
Thank you for this question, Ray. I did touch on it a little earlier, but I spoke with Peter Trozen to understand what was happening this year after I, you know, engaged with the budget creating process in 2019. But I wanted to understand what happened with COVID and how that affected things. And so I mentioned a few of that earlier. I served on the library board back in 2019, and I was anxious to understand, you know, the process and the issues that we were facing. I know the city has many different funding streams and expenses, and the general budget makes up only 20% of the overall budget. And it's the part that is the flexible part that we get to manipulate most easily. But it's limited, right? Because it has caps on, in property tax, that's where it comes from. And so I looked into the idea of tax on soft drinks and the various permutations of that kind of tax, and which seemed fair to me, you know, on the surface. But it seems like a monitoring and logistical issue. And then, so that was something that concerned me, but I tried to understand it. And if we could figure out a way to make it work, it provide a good amount of revenue. The utility fee, I think, is an easier way to configure, much easier, because we're already, we already have utility fees, we already have systems in place to collect the fees, and it, and it makes sense to look at this as a possibility. I feel I need to understand the proposal a little bit better before I can make a definitive answer because it would have effects on people, and I want to understand those effects depending on people's circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson, you're next up.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Stacy, what are your feelings about leveraging public-private partnerships to advance city projects or achieve the city's objectives?
I think we've been doing that as long as the city has been in existence. And it makes sense, and it needs to just be carefully looked at and understood. And we need to. And we need to make a thoughtful decision on those kind of actions.
All right, all right, great, thank you.
So Stacy, I've been allowed to have the last comment or question. Do you have any questions or comments for us?
Well, first comments, you've done a great job developing questions. And I really appreciated being first, you know, when I went to sign up, the only slot left was this slot, but I said, that's great. First is good. And I appreciate, you know, the time and energy you put into it. I've enjoyed this new city council. I like the energy that is here. And it would be a pleasure to serve beside all of you in the work of the city. I really wonder if there's a concern that people have, an immediate concern that people have going into tomorrow. And if I'm selected by you, what I would expect to jump into.
Well, I have been, we're all, I think we're all pleased with your answers to your questions. I think we can all nod and agree with that, and we're looking forward to deliberating later on this evening. And like, thank you for the time this evening. We're taking it away from the family, but we love, we really appreciate you spending time with us this evening. And it gave us a lot of work to do, so you're first. And thanks for coming out and then participating in the process.
Thank you, Alex.
Take care.
Yes, sir, we're going to display a waiting for the next candidate sign. You can understand and appreciate that we need to stick to the schedule tonight, so we finished a little bit early. The next candidate to be interviewed is Scott Lawley at five o'clock. This gives you 29 minutes to turn off your camera and go get a drink of water or have a bite to eat. And like I said, we will be showing a sign for the livestream that says that we're waiting for the next candidate. If you choose to stay here in the conference room, I would just caution you not to deliberate about the candidates, okay?
Excellent.
Other than that, you're welcome to talk about the snow that's outside. Yes, Bessie?
Read what I wrote. Counselors, on number eight, it was Dick's question about the land use. All I have is that she wants to work with developers and nonprofits. Is that pretty much what you have too?
Bessie?
We should be doing that.
Bessie, I heard her say that she has, she's got firsthand experience working with, well, with the land use system. Both helping develop the tiny house village, and now has her, with her job as construction manager.
Okay, great, thank you. I knew that, but I just couldn't quite remember it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Stay away for a minute. Please reserve comments and not deliberate.
Didn't want to do that.
So I don't know if I'm there or not.
I can hear you, Dick.
I can hear you and see you, at least when you talk.
I was going to ask Marilyn, if sometimes you're more mute and sometimes you're louder. I'm wondering where your microphone is.
Right under my chin. Can you hear me now?
Oh, that's perfect, yes.
Good. I changed headphones.
Okay, if you turn to your left, it gets quieter, muter.
I've been turning my mic off when I'm not using it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Maybe that's... I'm hearing you a lot better now.
Yeah, I had complaints last night, too, that people couldn't hear me.
We can't have that.
I don't say much, so you really don't need to be listening all that often. I wait till I have something to say that's important.
Well, good for you, yes. I need to take lessons.
So do I.
It's in your email already. Nope, got three more minutes. Matt, can you queue us up when you're ready to go?
Yes, I can. It looks like we're still waiting for Sean, or for Scott.
He was in here a second ago.
Oh, was he? I don't see him in the list right now.
Yeah, I saw that still pop up.
I would say as soon as he gets in and camera on, then go ahead and proceed. We were so efficient during that first session that had that big break, so.
That's a good word. I like to fish it.
Well, yeah, I was precise and to the point, so I enjoyed that, too.
I wonder if he had some technical problems all of a sudden. The snow got to him. He was there.
That's knocked out our satellite dish a couple of times this afternoon.
Yeah, I've heard that happens. I've only known one person that had the actual, had the dish and stuff, and they said that that's true, that snow can cover up the signal.
Yep.
I'll be darned. But do you like it otherwise?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to you about it.
I have never had cable.
Oh. Oh. Okay.
Hello, Scott. You can go ahead and turn your camera on. Hello, how are you this evening? Go ahead and unmute. Go ahead and unmute, please.
There, how about that?
So, I'd like to thank you for coming out and applying for the opportunity of City Council for Ward 2A. Go ahead and introduce yourself in order to introduce ourselves to you, and then we'll get started.
Okay, my name is Scott Lawley, and I live in Ward 2. My address is 6398 Looney Lane, Albany, and I'm just excited for the opportunity to become a counselor. I have a family, and I teach psychology at Lyndburn Community College. I'm sure you'll find out more about me as we go on.
Thank you very much, Scott. I greatly appreciate it. So, councilors, go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Dick Olson, I'm Councilman, Ward 1.
Hello, Dick.
I'm Bessie Johnson, Ward 3. Hi, Scott.
Hello, Bessie.
Carolyn Smith, Ward 3, also.
Hi, Marilyn.
Hi, Scott.
Matilda Novak, Ward 1. We've met.
Hello, Matilda. Nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you.
And I'm Alex Johnson II, the mayor. So, we're going to start our questions. I think there's 13 total questions. The last question will be for you to ask, the opportunity to ask us questions or give us comments. So, I'm going to get started. Are you ready to go?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'll try to maintain eye contact. I have notes from the questions I got, so I'll be sort of looking off. Doesn't mean that I don't appreciate looking at you. The other thing is I don't know how long each question is going to take, but if there's time, I'm certainly welcome to. You're welcome to have follow-up questions as we go along.
Thanks.
Agreed. So, first question is, as decision-makers, we should all have a vision for how Albany and the Middle Lament Valley will look in the next 10 to 15 years. It takes commitment to achieve a vision of great neighborhoods, quality water, a healthy environment, and a strong economy. It takes stronger connections and relationships with our business community and nonprofit agencies. Should local government foster economic growth? And follow-up to that is, how would you engage the business community to achieve economic growth?
Well, first of all, I think one of my main goals as a counselor would be to think about 2030. You know, the whole emphasis, the whole framework for council should be on the future, getting the city healthy into the next decade. And so, yes, of course, I think government should work with the private sector to foster growth. You know, a healthy economy is in everyone's best interest, and I think therefore it's in the best interest of the us and the city to be engaged with the business community and to partner with them to achieve goals, their goals as well as the city's. I think the council, from my experience in watching the city council and city government, is that there are a lot of connections already between the city and the private sector, and that there are plenty of civic groups out there, for instance, the Chamber of Commerce, local fraternity organizations, and I think I would start with these groups and reach out and establish my own relationships with them so that I could bring those back to the council and work with them there.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I appreciate it. Next up is Councilor Smith.
Right. Scott, what brought you to Albany? What do you like about living here? And how does your experience in Albany align with the city's mission and vision statements?
Out of the 12, 13 questions, I think this might be my favorite one, just because it's so easy to answer. I came to Albany from Chicago to work with the Catherine Freer Wilderness Therapy Program. Remember that?
Yep.
It's a great program. It attracted me. I was living in, or near Chicago with my family, and I wanted, I felt, my kids were just born, and I felt like I wanted to come back to the West. I grew up here, went to schools here, and still have family here. I wanted to come back to the West to raise my kids, and I think Albany was a great choice for me. Albany's that size of city, and the neighborhoods are great, and my kids made great friends. I still have some of those friends. They're sophomores at West now, but I get to know, I feel like I can know my kids' friends, parents, and the interactions I have with people are just great. Something about Albany that I really appreciate, and this will be a part of the basis, perhaps, of how I approach my work as a counselor, is by paying attention to the strategic plan. So, there are four themes: great neighborhoods, safe community, healthy economy, which may be the starting point, and then effective government. And I appreciate these things and the goals, the objectives, and I feel as if I can resonate with them, work with them, and I think my values are closely aligned with what I feel and what I see in them.
Thank you very much. Nice to see somebody acknowledge the strategic plan.
Thank you so much. Next up is Councilor Olson.
Okay, that's a similar question. Why do you want to be a city councilor? And why would residents in your Ward 2 vote for you, and why should we choose you as a fellow city councilor?
Well, first of all, I should admit that I'm pretty humbled by the responsibility that's looking me in the face by this. I have thought about this opportunity for a certain amount of time, and I don't want to pretend I don't understand, I think, the magnitude of the responsibility. So, there's a part of me that fights against my strong desire to become a part of the council, but I want to become a voice in the affairs of local government. I've been inspired by the last five years of my involvement. I've been on different commissions with the city, and I've been on nonprofit boards over these years, and advisory boards, and I've really come to enjoy it. I think that national, regional, state government has a place in my life. I vote. I don't think I've missed a vote since I was old enough to do it. But I think it's at the local level, it's at the municipal, the local level where governance starts. And I don't think the, you know, the founders of our country meant it in any other way except that we engage in local politics. I think it's the foundation of our democracy. So, I want to participate in that. And I want the whole city to prosper. I'll be a representative of everybody in the city. And the health of the city will affect the constituency, my constituents in Ward 2. So, it's, I don't want to use cliches, but I mean, it's a win-win situation between the constituents in my ward and the rest of the city. So, that's where my focus will be and where I'll be looking towards. You know, Ward 2 has its own special issues, right? They have their own demographics. They're different than the other wards. So, I want to pay attention to that. I want to get to know the neighborhoods and learn what people my ward want, find out what their interests are, and what the families are concerned about on a daily basis. I want to understand these things, and I'm eager to do that. So, that's why you should pick me.
Okay. Okay.
That's why people should vote for me.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, when, when you actually run for the office, you, you find out what people think a lot of the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So the next up is councillor Novak.
Thank you, Scott. What do you consider to be the top three issues facing Albany? And what steps would you take to address them?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm sure glad you, uh, Matilda, that you limited it to three, okay? Uh, first of all, I think the most important thing is, and everything sort of comes out of this, doesn't it? Out of financial stability and the ability to move forward with a healthy, um, economy and a healthy, um, balanced budget in the city. That's number one. Number two, I think, and there's a lot to choose from, but I'm interested in, uh, working on, maybe tackling, certainly I doubt solving the issue of housing and homelessness. I have a certain, um, background and interested, interest in homelessness. And it certainly is an issue I think that, um, people are working on, thinking about, uh, in, in Albany. And I, I know that the mayor recently has, um, how did the paper put it? So had wandered into, maybe not accidentally, but is, is interested in, in tackling this. Third thing is just simply livability. And I think the other things sort of, well, I live in, in Albany and I like it. I like it that it's so livable. Um, it means, uh, meeting the budget, having fiscal responsibility without sacrificing. And I wanna emphasize this, without sacrificing the great neighborhoods and the, uh, other aspects which make Albany great. Um, so, how would I address them? I think, well, I just, you know, I wanna find out what people think. And, um, I'm willing to, I believe, given time constraints in my life, going out, uh, visiting churches, getting involved with, uh, schools, talking to teachers and finding out what's going on in, in my, um, in my district, my, uh, ward. So, uh, with the, uh, I can go on, but I, I think maybe I'll just leave it with that.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, thank you Scott. The, um, next councillor in the fire is, uh, councillor Kobsinski.
Scott, what do you believe is the best way to finish up the Urban Renewal District CARA program?
Um, well, I know that, uh, CARA, the, and, uh, U R D has been, uh, really on the, uh, plate for, uh, the city for a long time now. And I think that it is, it's coming to an end and I think it's really time to, uh, make some decisions and move on and get something, um, uh, you know, make some contributions, some tangible contribution to urban renewal. So the waterfront is a great project. Since I moved in to Albany fifteen years ago, I, I've looked at that area and I thought, what a great place, you know? But, you know, the one place I can see it is over in Bryant Park. Or, uh, from Montive Park, and not even from Montive Park. And I, you go up Dave Clark, uh, Trail, you sort of get a sense that the water is there, but I think there's so much potential. Um, I think of, um, Water Avenue. Uh, I know in, in the plan that there's some mention of, uh, developing Water Avenue for street festivals. Maybe, um, I can see the, uh, farmer's market there, all kinds of things that would really add a lot of interest in our city. Um, the, I also see the, um, Saint Francis Hotel project is a, a real tangible thing we could. It's, uh, it's already there. Um, it, it's not like, and I, I realize it's a big project, I was at the meeting a couple of nights ago. Um, it's a huge project, but I think it's there, it's in the downtown, um, with some improvement there. And as part of the finishing touches on, uh, CARA, that could be something that, uh, we should look at. Um, in the end, um, I'm gonna take my cues from, um, people who know and make decisions about, um, the direction we go with, with CARA. It's a great opportunity, I think, at this point, for a councillor to be involved in that.
Right, thank you Scott. Uh, next up is councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you Mayor. Scott, do you feel it would be beneficial for the council to have annual joint meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, the Albany Downtown Association, the Albany Visitor Association, Greater Albany Public Schools, and any other applicable organizations to get their views and ideas regarding what's happening in Albany?
Yeah, I, I sure do. Um, of, of course, I think we should get input. The, uh, particularly, uh, GAPS. I've been to a couple of their, um, board meetings and watched what they do. But, you know, I got kids, uh, at GAPS and, um, I think it'd be useful as a council to get their input. I think closer understanding of these physi, uh, physical organizations would help with coordination of their goals and our goals. Um, and while sitting on various committees, boards and commissions, I've always appreciated hearing from the stakeholders, um, from, that had input to give me. So I, I, I think I look at these meetings that you're talking about councillor as an opportunity to get, um, feedback from stakeholders and for them also to hear from us. So that said, I think it'd be important for me, and I take it as a, the challenge perhaps, personal challenge to reach out and meet with these, uh, these groups on my own and, and visit, you know, with their invitation and find out in their, um, uh, meetings what, what might be valuable for me as a councillor to know.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you much Scott. Um, my next question, uh, I'm up next. Uh, as a city councillor, you will be required to make decisions on a wide variety of topics that affect the citizens of Albany. What relationships, resources or tools will you rely upon to help you develop and formulate your decisions?
Well, first of all, I think, as I move into this position, probably the first resource I'm gonna use is the city council as it stands now. Uh, you folks are the, you know, if, if you're okay with this, I'll call you the experts on all this run. I know some of you are newer than others, but, um, even, you know, even those, I respect your opinions and, and, and your knowledge. Um, I, I also talk to city staff such as, um, Community Economic Department, uh, Police Department, I wanna talk to these folks, um, Parks and Recreation. Uh, their resources, their input is something I wanna, I'll look to. Also, not only, uh, the city, but I know the city is a part of a larger, um, area, right? A larger, uh, governance, and that is, uh, Lynn County. Uh, there's resources there, people I would like to talk with, public health, particularly in this time of, um, COVID. I think public health would be a, a great resource, I wanna know more about what they're doing. Mental health, it's a part that, um, concern that, uh, uh, Albany depends upon their work. Um, Planning and Building Department over there. Uh, and other groups. Another one I think that, uh, I should mention is Cascades West Council of Governments. I think there's, I, I used to work there. Uh, I know the structure and, uh, leadership has changed quite a bit, uh, recently. But, uh, I know how they work to, to an extent. And I think that, um, there's some partnerships there that, some resources that I could use there. Um, yeah. Anything else? I think, I think those are the resources and those that help me formulate my decisions.
Right, thank you very much, Scott, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Uh, next up is councillor Smith.
Yes. Albany's population continues to evolve. How could city government better connect with traditionally underrepresented individuals or groups to make Albany more welcoming and inclusive?
Uh, that's another great question, Marilyn, and I welcome it. Uh, I was a member, have been a member of the, uh, Human Relations Commission. And I think their, um, focus is on, on, on these issues. And I think as a councillor member, I would, um, encourage the council to utilize their expertise. Joust and find out what the issues are. I think they are the ones who should, uh, have the responsibility of, um, helping the council create a, a more welcoming, inclusive community. Um, I'm also a member of the, uh, NAACP, the local, uh, chapter. And they, uh, I believe could be a resource for me to understand and, and have, um, groups, um, heard, um, for us to listen to. Um, I'm also on the, uh, faculty at Lynn Benton Community College. And there, there is a department of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. And I get emails frequently about seminars, activities, uh, programs that they have. And they are, uh, a great resource for understanding, for gaining understanding knowledge and access, having access to those underrepresented groups.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Yep.
Councillor Olson, you have the next question.
Yes, um, Scott, well, what's your opinion and your experience in dealing with Oregon's land use laws? And what importance would you put on the city's land use planning efforts?
Well, my, I just actually learned about, I mean, I had a, a sense, I mean, I, Oregon has the reputation of being environmentally conscious. And I think somewhere in the back of my head, I've had an understanding for years about the efforts of, uh, the state government in regulating land use. As I got into this, I learned that a lot of this, um, land use, uh, laws in Oregon have developed from the, the sixties. And going into the seventies, uh, with, um, and there was Bill, one Senate Bill one hundred in seventy-three that created the urban growth boundaries. And I know that through conversations with city staff that these are, uh, I wouldn't say restrictive, although that may be a term people use, but it's, they're guidelines, right? Um, my experience is not extensive and I understand that the council and, um, city manager's office, city staff are fairly conversant with these and that these would be an important, um, concern for, um, me as a city councillor to pay attention to. I think I'll stop there, but it's important and, um, not to be avoided.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep Oregon livable, yes, thanks.
Next up would be councillor Novak.
Thank you. Scott, as a city councillor, you're representing all citizens in your ward. Citizens who have a range of backgrounds, positions and viewpoints on city business. How does your background and experience help you in dealing with individuals who may see things differently from you?
Yeah, um, one of the things that I thought about and, uh, as I was moving towards deciding to make this application to the council. And something I wasn't terribly happy with, and that is that as soon as you become a city councillor, you get a big target on your back, right? And, uh, you become very unpopular with probably at least half the constituents, right? And the other halves, they might agree with you or don't care. So, uh, how to deal with that? Um, now, I, I've spent a career working to encourage my point of view with people as a councillor, trying to teach people, um, whatever I know about, uh, a situation. And, uh, I've worked in corrections, um, worked with probation parole. And as, as a teacher, I'm trying to bring people around. So I've learned some things about how to, um, work with people, how to convince people, if that's the word. But, uh, well, well, I, I recognize that one of my main duties perhaps as a councillor is to talk and listen to my constituents, talk and listen to people who, uh, have input. And I tend to incorporate their views in my decision-making process. Now, we're just to, uh, sort of wrap that up, and that is that in the end, I know I'll have just one vote. And like I said, it's likely that there'll be a lot of people that disagree with me and a lot of people maybe that do agree with me, and I'm just gonna have to live with that and articulate, uh, as best I can my thinking and decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
You bet.
Councillor Kobsinski, you're next up, sir.
Okay, Scott, please touch on your experience or understanding of public sector budgeting and financial planning. Albany's income isn't keeping up with expenses and the city has already made some ser, made service level cuts and expects to make more. Would you support a utility fee for additional revenue as other cities in Oregon have done?
Uh, first thing is, um, is I spent a few years working at the Cog, Council of Governments as a business analyst. And, um, I played with a lot of numbers, uh, financial numbers as well as demographics and, uh, use of their services numbers. So I've had some experience, uh, and it's actually a part of the job that, that job, part of my career, I really enjoyed working with numbers and so forth. However, um, I haven't, I, I recognize that I haven't had experience, um, trying to balance a, a budget of, um, we, my family, I do okay. But, you know, you know, I don't even know how many millions of dollars frankly, uh, are in the budget, the, the biannual. Well, it's a annual budget right now, I think, but moving to a biannual.
Biannual.
Is that right, Peter?
Yes.
It's, it's biannual and it's three hundred and forty-seven million.
Oh, geez. Holy, holy, anyway, uh, that's, that's pretty intimidating. Um, but, you know, I'm gonna listen to, uh, city managers, uh, proposed budget, review the budget committee, uh, look at things, listen, get involved in the conversation with the city council. Um, but like I said before, I'm gonna, uh, review the goals and themes of the strategic plan and make sure that whatever cuts we make, it does not, uh, set the city back in terms of its, uh, strategic goals. Um, now, as regards to, um, councillor, the, um, utility fee, on the face of it, I, I think that it's probably a good source of revenue. I know it's probably, um, unpopular, um, but, uh, it, the other thing is, I, it strikes me as regressive. That is, that, you know, people at the lower end, uh, are still paying the same as, uh, people at the upper end. And I believe that perhaps some sort of accommodation should be needed for, for that, the regressiveness of that. But, you know, once I learned about it, uh, and started to understand how other cities are, are using it, it certainly makes a lot of it certainly makes a lot of sense. And I think in the end, I'd probably support it, but I'd like to have a discussion around that.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you Scott, you have one, Counselor Johnson.
Okay.
Yes Scott, what are your feelings about leveraging public-private partnerships to advance city projects or achieve the city's objectives?
Well, I think it's, you know, a win-win situation. Of course, of course, it's a good thing to leverage our, the public monies into private partnerships. I frankly, you know, don't understand why people wouldn't agree with this and support it. What I understand too from discussions and with other city staff and what I've seen, meetings, is that there's a 6:1 ratio of a return on investment. And, you know, if I could make that much money anywhere, I'd be, I'd be rich. And I think it's a really good idea. And I think, so there's, I, now my understanding is a lot extensive on this. But I think some of the pushback from the citizenry is based on a lack of understanding of where this money comes from for these projects. This is something I'd like to have a discussion with, with you folks and maybe other city staff. But the money isn't really tax dollars, is it? There's TIF and then there's targeted grants and so forth. So it just, you know, given the 6:1 return, it just makes great sense to me.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Scott, thank you for those answers. Your last one, for me, do you have any questions or comments for us?
Well, I'd like, I mean, I've got plenty of time left on the clock. But, so, actually, I'd rather, I'd like to just get out of here. Because this is going to be wonderful. But anyway, look, I just want people to know that I am prepared. And I have the abilities, I have the capability to be a good counselor. And I really look forward to the opportunity I have for a while. And I think what I bring, and I'd like you to recognize that I bring a fresh set of eyes to this group. This is a pretty new, this is, I think, unusual in the history of the city council where there's been so much turnover, turnover in the sense that there's new, fresh meat for people. But I bring that fresh set of eyes, new perspective. And I suspect I'll have some corresponding new ideas to add to the mix, so. And the last thing I want to say is that I want to emphasize that I really believe I have a healthy respect for the extent of the responsibilities. And I don't enter, of a counselor, and I don't enter into this responsibility lightly. I've talked with my family, I've talked with my friends. And, you know, I've gotten all kinds of personal advice. I think I know what I'm stepping into. And I've been encouraged to continue along the way. So I want you to, I want you to hear that from me.
Well, thank you very much Scott. After this, we're going to take a break. Until, when's the next candidate come up?
Five, 5:45, Mayor.
Five forty-five, so we have some, well, 10 minutes. So thank you Scott very much.
You bet.
We're going to take a break until 5:45. Marilyn, you have a question?
No, no, I'm just saying, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you too.
Okay, bye, thank you very much.
And we'll take a break till 10, till, or 15 till?
Quarter.
A quarter. We'll get started again.
So is it worse now?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Yep, ready whenever you are. It looks like Amanda's on.
So Amanda, please turn your camera on. Can't you hear me? Amanda?
Actually, look, oh, there we go. Okay, it was grayed out. Now it looks solid. So maybe she was logging on.
Okay. Hi Amanda.
Somebody took Bethany out.
Hello Amanda. Hi. Technical difficulties. Okay, so welcome to the. You got it. Okay, good. Welcome to the War Two City Council interviews with the city council. And you were next up. We're supposed to start at 5:45. So thank you for coming this evening. Would you please introduce yourself to the city council?
Hi, I'm Amanda Dan. I am a citizen of Ward Two, obviously, and I look forward to answering your questions this evening.
Well, thank you very much for looking forward to this council. Go ahead and introduce yourself to the candidate.
Yeah, I'm City Councilman Dick Olson from Ward One. And so hi, welcome to the meeting.
And I'm Bethany Johnson, Ward Three. Welcome.
Matilda Novak, Ward One.
Ray Kupczynski, Ward Two.
Carolyn Smith, Ward Three.
And I'm one of your neighbors, Mayor Johnson, out of Ward One, Ward Two. I've lost on that one. So we have 13 questions approximately for you. Each of us are going to ask you two, and your last question will be an opportunity for you to ask us questions and give us comment. Is that okay? So I'm gonna go ahead and get started for meeting efficiency sake. So as decision makers, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, as decision makers, we should all have a vision for how Albany and the Mid Valley, the Lament Valley, will look for the next 10 to 15 years. It takes commitment to achieve a vision of great neighborhoods, quality water, a healthy environment, a strong economy. It takes strong connections and relationships with our business community and nonprofit agencies. Should local government foster economic growth? And how would you engage in business community to achieve economic growth?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I think that anybody who is, wants to be involved with the city government, of course, needs to foster and encourage economic growth. With that in mind, I think it's important to remember that a counselor's first duty is to its citizens and the people that they're representing. I am a small business owner myself, so of course I want to see businesses grow. I want to see them be successful. But I think that they can't be successful until our citizens are successful. And so we need to remember that by advocating and representing people in the community, we're able to have that trickle down into our economy. And encouraging the growth in all different factors. So yes, absolutely, I do support economic growth, but I think we need to remember that the community needs to be the first thing that's always on our minds.
Well, thank you very much for your response. And I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Smith.
Hi Amanda. What brought you to Albany? What do you like about living here? And how does your experience in Albany align with the city's mission and vision statements?
Hi, thank you, Counselor Smith. I moved to Albany short, right after graduating high school in 2003. I went to LBCC and shortly after got married and had children. So I've spent the past 18 years really making Albany my home. I really have enjoyed a lot of things. Being a mother, I obviously have a lot to do with the schools. We've experienced parks, we've gone to river rhythms, we've been involved in all different types of things that make this community really an enjoyable, livable family town. I think that for the most part, you know, our mission statement is primarily around a lot to do with accessible and responsive and consistent government. And I think that before running for the Ward Two seat, I think that maybe I thought that progressively in terms of women being treated equal, female business owners being treated the same as male, I've definitely seen a little bit of inconsistency in that. While running for office, there were definitely questions that I was asked that were probably not the same questions that would have been asked of male candidates. And I'm not sure if that has something to do with my age, but for the most part, that was the first time that I really noticed that while we have come far as a community, we still have a lot of work to do to really make sure that we are fostering the diversity and equity and inclusion that we need in our community. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much for that response. And next up will be Counselor Olson.
Yeah, thank you. And Amanda, why do you want to be a city council? I think you've already partially answered that. Why would residents in your ward want to vote for you? And why should we choose you to be on our city council?
Thank you, Counselor Olson. I want to bring a new perspective in diversity to the city council. I think that we're lacking in representation for some citizens. I want to advocate for those. Lifelong residents, people that have been previously underrepresented, and the next generation. We need to make sure that our children are supported, that Albany's livability is accessible in the housing, inclusion and equity in our schools, local government commissions, all of those things are a direct reflection of who we put in leadership roles, things like commissions. We need a city council that represents our entire community so that we can preserve Albany as being a livable, vibrant, multi-generational community full of all different kinds of people. We can't just focus on one group. We need to make sure that all of our values and dreams are being supported and encouraged. Unlike other candidates, I ran in this last election cycle, so I don't think that people would vote for me. I know that they would. Over 2,000 people in my ward voted for me. And I think that if we remember that ultimately my duty as a counselor is to the citizens of Ward Two. While it does come down to a vote amongst you and mayor, the people did, they did vote for me. And I spent a lot of time asking a lot of questions and meeting with loads of people, all different types of people. Different incomes, different lifestyles, different beliefs. And one thing that I was able to find with everybody is that I can treat them with respect and they relate to me. So I think that you should vote for me because that's what the people would want, I really think, and that I am a new face. I'm somebody who wants to bring change without any reservations going into it.
Okay, thank you. Wide range of people in Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda, for that. And next up, I'll turn you over to Counselor Novak.
Amanda, what do you consider to be the top three issues facing Albany? And what steps would you take to address them?
Thank you, Counselor Novak. I think that we are in obviously an unprecedented time, given that COVID is happening. As a mother and a business owner during this time, I think that we need to remember, while thinking long term is very important, and of course, we want to set future people up for success, but right now, we're dealing with at least the next two years of trying to come back from that. We have people that are unable to access unemployment funds. We have kids that don't have proper Wi-Fi. We have citizens that are without housing. That first and foremost needs to be something that is understood and needs to be taken care of. Secondly, diversity and inclusion and equity in our entire government system. I think that we are at a very pivotal time in our, the history and the making. It's not just enough to be, to say you're not racist. We need to be anti-racist. And that's something that we need to be showing in our commission appointments, in our city leaders. We have an example to set, and I feel that part of the community has definitely lost a little bit of their, not their faith per se, but they don't trust in leadership as much as they have in the past. I think that sometimes often they're seeing things that they don't understand, and they're wanting reassurance, and oftentimes they're met with crickets. And we need to make sure that people understand that we're going to say things, and then we're going to follow through. We ourselves as leaders are going to set the example for our children and for everybody. Thirdly, housing is obviously an issue in Albany. I think that we all need to work together to make sure that our most vulnerable citizens and people, you know, underrepresented population have homes and food, and they're able to support their own lives because then they can be active members, members of the community. So finding new housing opportunities and making sure that all needs are being met.
Thank you.
So thank you, Amanda. Counselor Kupczynski, you're up.
Yes, Amanda, what do you believe is the best way to finish up the Orangeville District, the CARA program?
Thank you, counselor. I think that ultimately, if you know very much about that program, which the average citizen really doesn't. I think that that's something that we need to possibly educate more people on so that they have more of an understanding on it, where the money comes from, what it's being spent on. I think that with the remaining funds, we should go back to kind of what it was made for to begin with, which is increasing the value of current and existing buildings so that property taxes can be an additional revenue. While I do agree that having a new waterfront would be lovely, we all want amazing parks and all that. We need to focus on what we have before we spend money that we don't have. Even though CARA has funds remaining, there are big projects that are wanting to be made that would potentially wipe out those funds. And we need to make sure that we're focusing on things that can still bring revenue in, in the, in the, in the long run and in the short term.
Thank you. And the next will be Counselor Best, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi Amanda. Do you feel it would be beneficial, the council, excuse me, do you feel it would be beneficial for the council to have annual joint meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, the Albany Downtown Association, the Albany Visitors Association, Greater Albany Public Schools, and any other applicable organization to get their views and ideas regarding what is happening in Albany?
I do. I think that it's important with these meetings in mind to know that we want to go in with a specific plan of what's going to be discussed, what our goals are to achieve. I do think that there will have to be some distinguishing between which organizations are, most importantly, need to be met with, whether it's things that are more in the private sector, nonprofits. I think it would be great to reach out to the NAACP. In some of these places, I think more than an annual meeting is going to be necessary. If we want to make sure that all populations are represented and are being supported, then we need to meet with them on a regular basis. If not the counselors individually, then perhaps that's something that we need to be having more liaisons that go between the groups. And again, really making sure that commissions are filled with people that have experience. And if they don't have experience, they at least fill kind of that diverse background of all different kinds of people that are going to bring ideas. So I think that in order to make sure that our entire community is funded correctly and grants are used appropriately, absolutely, we should be meeting with these groups.
Thank you.
And the next one's for me. Okay. Thank you, Amanda. As a city council, you will be required to make decisions on a wide variety of topics that affect the citizens of Albany. What relationships, resources, or tools will you rely upon to help you develop and formulate your decisions?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. With all due respect, I think that this question is maybe not something that I'm really focused on. I do think that it's important to have relationships and tools and resources, but I'm not going into it with who I know and what I have. Yes, I'm using my life experiences, but what I want to do is what I've done all along and is talk to the community, talk to the citizens of Ward Two. I don't need to use the people I know or try to figure things out for them. I want to listen to them. And I think that so often in government, we spend so much time telling people what they should want and what they should, how they should live, that we forget to actually listen to the things that will actually help them thrive. And I don't have a lot, I don't know a lot of people. I don't have unlimited resources. I'm 36 years old and I want to make a difference. And if that means that I go into it and I have to ask a ton of questions, the outcome is going to be the same because either way, the people I'm going to listen to most is my community.
Okay. Next up is Counselor Smith.
Yes, Amanda, as, as you've mentioned a number of times so far, Albany's population continues to evolve. How could city government better connect with traditionally underrepresented individuals or groups to make Albany more welcoming and inclusive?
I think that we really need to make sure that we have a diverse group of leaders. And that's something that I've wanted to bring to the table from all along. I am a mother. I have kids in the schools. I live in low-income housing, and I have a completely different outlook on things that somebody that has never wondered how they're going to pay their car payment is. From somebody that, you know, is worried they might not be able to attend a meeting because they don't have a babysitter. It's not enough to just keep saying that we're equitable and that we're inviting everybody to partake in the city's activities and be involved until we actually make it so they can get to the table to be heard. And I think that a lot of times, people just kind of get forgotten, and we're making decisions for oftentimes people that are, you know, making $20,000 a year is completely different than how somebody who makes $100,000 a year would make a decision. I live, like I said, in government subsidized housing, and we have a board of directors, and we don't have an apartment representative on there. And for me, I think that's, doesn't seem to make sense because how can you make a decision for the lives of people that have never worried about being homeless? You know, I've always had a roof over my head. I've always been able to provide food for my girls. But I can definitely tell you that there's been times where I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to cover all my bills the next month. So I do have a unique perspective. I know what it's like to work hard and really communicate with a lot of different people. I really just believe that that's one of the number one things that we can do is we can show that, well, yes, you know, diversity of thought is important on our commissions and in our council. It can't be the defining thing when the example that it's setting is that we actually aren't having that much diversity. So I just think that this is a unique opportunity for the council to make the decision to choose something different.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Olson.
Oh, yeah. What's your, what is your opinion and experience in dealing with Oregon's land use laws? And what importance would you put on the city's land use planning efforts?
Unfortunately, I don't have a ton of experience on things like land use. However, I do follow a lot of things that have happened in the city over the years. I know about, you know, the challenges with making sure that we preserve our historic districts. We actually have, you know, the most large historic district west of the Mississippi. And it's important to understand that while sometimes it might seem that we're focusing more on preservation, that is something that brings people to the city for tourism and whatever things, and that is a way that our city does make money. But it's important to think of the fact that we do need homes. We are going to have to do developing, but we need to make sure that we're following the land use and we're putting the people's wishes, the citizens' wishes, the homeowners' wishes before the development, development wishes. You know, I know that there's several lawsuits with historic things now, and those are going to always happen. And we need to make sure that we're listening to people. And we also still have 20 to 30 years worth of buildable land in the urban growth area. So it's important to kind of focus on the land that we can develop before worrying too much about branching beyond that. And hopefully, we'll see what happens in the next few years.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Protect me about land use and the urban growth. Something we need to think seriously about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Next up is Counselor Novak.
Thank you. Amanda, as a city counselor, you're representing all citizens in your ward. Citizens who have a range of backgrounds, positions, and viewpoints on city business. How does your background and life experience help you in dealing with individuals who may see things differently than you?
Thank you, Counselor Novak. I think I've touched on this quite a bit. I definitely have a diverse background. I am able to get along with a wide range of people and really listen to what they're saying. However, I'm not the type of person who's going to let things go unnoticed. So I think that's what we need because I do have that understanding and that ability to communicate with people because I think that everybody really should have a level amount of respect. I really think that we need to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable. And, excuse me. I'm someone who is willing to advocate and speak up, and that is what people need. Even when we don't agree, you can still respectfully say this is wrong. But we need to, we need to do that.
Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you very much. And you are next up with Counselor Kupczynski.
Get this paperwork put aside here. Okay, Amanda, please touch on your experience or understanding of public sector budgeting and financial planning. Albany's income isn't keeping up with expenses, and the city has already made many service level cuts and expects to make more. Would you support a utility fee for additional revenue as other cities in Oregon have done?
Hi, thank you. I do not have a lot of experience with planning. I think that most counselors coming into things don't. And I think that that's why it's important to use your appointments for commissions to make sure that you're putting people on the building committees and the transient lodging tax commission that have experience and expertise and want to work for the community. And they're willing to listen to all opinions and open to the options that will fill that budget gap. I do think that some type of utility tax is a feasible option, but I think that we would have to look into how we could make it affordable to families that couldn't afford anything. And I've seen that there's even been talks of doing, you know, a dollar per household. And I think it's important to remember that a dollar might not seem to, like, very much to some people, but were at a time where if you're below poverty level, you might not have a dollar. And so we're going to need to figure out whether there needs to be a sliding scale, whatever fees do come about, then we're going to have to make sure that they are not making hardships for our citizens.
Thank you. Okay, I'm taking those. All right. So next would be, thank you, Amanda, Counselor Johnson.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Amanda, what are your feelings about leveraging public and private partnerships to advance city projects or achieve the city's objectives?
Hi, thank you, Counselor Johnson. I think that it's very important to work together. So whether it be with private sectors and city, in the city, by doing that, we're helping it be more possible to utilize funds quickly and efficiently and make sure that they're reaching the people that need them the most, whether with grants, communities, support, whatever's needed. That gives us the opportunity to focus on what we do best and make those connections and business connections that work and utilize everything in the best way.
All right. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, last question's for you. To ask questions of us, do you have any questions or comments for us?
I have a couple of questions. The first would just be kind of a general question. What are you as city council members planning on doing to increase the transparency and accessibility for people in the current economy and in the current situation? for people, um, in the current economy and in the current situation?
Um, transparency to what? Amanda, please elaborate.
Well, I think that while running for, um, the office, I found that it is pretty difficult to actually be involved without doing a lot of time being involved. Um, you know, things are coming up in meetings. And then now that you can't attend the meetings in public, they're coming up on the agenda to be voted on before really, um, reaching a lot of people. For example, the earlier start time. And I think that, I'm just wondering, what is going to be done to make sure that people are able to know about these things without having to spend hours reading through minutes and agendas and Hassel Haring articles and the Albany Democrat Herald? Is there any plans to hopefully make things more reachable to a broader spectrum of people?
So, Holly, is Holly on? We have plans for getting that information. That'll be the website. And I know that Peter is working. So Peter, go ahead and answer that question.
Sure. Everything, the city has actually won awards for transparency. So everything is very transparent right now. And yes, people do have to put some effort into visiting the website. They do have to take a look at the agendas and they do have to read Hassel's blog. And they do have to read the Democrat Herald. But as you pointed out, there are many, many opportunities to stay abreast of what's going on in the city. So there's no, um, current attempts to do more than that because I think there's quite a bit that's already being done. What we have to do is make sure that we continue to stay as transparent as we are. Uh, and you can certainly, uh, go to the website and find out anything you need about, about the budget. And you can also call me at any time and talk to me. I'm happy to answer your questions and happy to, uh, to, uh, have refer you to the right person on the city staff as well. And that's not just you. It would be any of your friends, colleagues, or any of the citizens in Albany.
Thank you. Um, with all due respect, not everybody has the internet. Um, I think that so often we forget that not everybody is, all the things are accessible. So with, just with that right there, you're saying, go on the city website. And I know this isn't a debate and I'm not trying to argue. I'm just saying, sometimes we forget to look at it from a perspective beyond our own. For all of you and myself included, it's not anything to think of hopping on the internet and Googling something. But my mom lives in my ward and she doesn't know how to Google anything. My neighbor that lives right over here, that doesn't know where to get her, you know, her products for her diabetes, she doesn't know how to Google. So while we may have won awards on transparency, I think that if we were really to talk to the people beyond those that are already doing the research, we would find that there's more to be doing, to be done. Um, but okay, that was my, my main question. Um, the other thing is just a statement. Um, I really think that this time in our community, we need to feel like we're being heard. And we need to feel like we're being represented. And we need to feel like our leaders are ready to advocate for us, even when it's something that they might not completely agree with. And we, as a community and myself, I need to feel like councillors are listening to me and answering me in a way that is understandable and I can hold them accountable to that. Um, children are watching. The next generation is watching. There's parents that sit and watch these meetings and our kids are in the background. And when they hear councillors use terms that are inappropriate or outdated or bigotry and or anything like that, they're hearing that. And I find it hard as a parent to hold my children accountable when we don't hold our city elected officials accountable. Um, I look forward to the change. And I look forward to the possibility of getting to work alongside with all of you and bringing that perspective of somebody who has had a different life and has been judged because of it, but still wants to put forth the effort and the time and the passion to actually get things done for everybody. And that's what we need in this community. We need true diversity, inclusion, and equity. And I hope that you guys understand that this is really a time where our community needs that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending. Appreciate it. Okay, the next time is what? Let me see, let's go back up here.
Okay, the next interview is scheduled for 6:30, Mayor.
What time is it now?
Right at 6:15.
6:15, Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Amanda. She's gone.
Sharon, we were getting a lot of, uh, background noise, so I muted you.
So are we ready to get started, Matt?
Well, let's see what.
So we're looking for, there we go. You're back on, Sharon.
Are you, are you hearing me okay? Or is there any background?
Yeah.
No, there was earlier, but I don't hear it now. So we're ready to go.
I have a little space heater on in my office, so if you pick up a noise, I can turn it off.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I mean, I mean, do you hear anything or not? Is it okay? Okay, okay. Great, great. Hello.
I'm in this evening. Um, we are here to interview you for the War II AIC City Councillor seat this remaining two years. We'd like to thank all of you for coming, so please introduce yourself. And we'll have the councillors introduce themselves and we'll get started.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I think you all know me, so. But, um, I'm Sharon Canopa and, um, and you know me. So been around for a long time and I think I know all of you. But I only see, um, I only see four of you. Is Dick and Matilda on?
Dick, Dick Olson's on my screen. He's there.
Oh, okay. Everyone's on. Okay. I'm only picking up, um, just, well, four of you, so.
Okay, Matilda just turned her camera back.
I had turned my camera off temporarily, but I am very much here.
I'm used to seeing you folks, so.
So, so are we ready to go and get started, everyone? Excellent.
Do we all can share and see us all and I can see.
I'll bet you can see you, Councilor Olson.
Nope, I can't. I can't see you and Matilda.
Interesting. What's wrong here?
I have no idea. So.
Are you on your, are you on an?
I'm on my iPad, so it could be the iPad.
Oh, okay.
So I didn't log in. I can log in off my laptop, but, but that's fine.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, so first question, as decision, decision makers, we should all envision for how Albany and the Mid-Valley Valley will look for the next 10 to 15 years. It takes commitment to achieve a vision of great, great neighborhoods, quality water, a healthy environment and strong economy. It takes strong connections and relationships with our business community and nonprofit agencies. Should local government foster economic growth? And how would you engage the business community to achieve economic growth?
Okay, well, yes, they should, and which we have been doing a great job of it. But when it comes to a vision, what is one person's vision might not be the same for another person. Kind of the same as businesses, what their vision is for community might not be the same as other businesses. And the same as all residents can have different views. So, and, and when it comes to economic development, it is really a subjective term. You know, some folks might think a food cart is economic growth and that's all you need. While others think a Boeing might need to come to our region and that's all we should get. So it is, it's, it's one that it's hard to find that balance too, but you have to look at the whole paradigm. So you don't just, you need to look at our whole community, what our community's char, character is and what would be a good fit. But mostly the economic base and that is the dollars in that, in your, you know, community. That part is the most important is that economic base. When the Great Recession, you know, when, you know, we lost, you know, IP, you know, higher paying jobs. We kind of made the mistake, you know, but, you know, hindsight, I look back at, we were looking at any job was a job. And so a minimum wage job was a job. We did not care at that point. We were really trying to promote jobs. But then the minimum wage jobs are not going to support a community, is not going to support public services. So we kind of built up a lot in that sector in that, you know, for, for lower paying jobs. And because we, you know, we needed anything at that point, so, but what was great as that partnership was working with the metals industry that stepped up to the plate to really expand on those jobs. And up before COVID, they were doing fantastic. That was kind of our biggest, you know, employment sector that we had was the metals industry. And now with COVID, it has really, because of, you know, Boeing and everything cutting back, that's really hurting them. So we, you know, need to get back and really focus on, you know, living wage jobs. That is the, the main thing that's really going to support our public services is having more higher paying jobs. But we're fortunate to have our economic development staff with the city. That's a great resource because they're going to know firsthand what to really focus on in our community. That's going to match that community's character. So, but you know, just any job sometimes might not be the right fit. And kind of an example, I don't know if you read through my, you know, you know, years of advocacy over the years. But when it was the power plant that was trying to come in and it was just back behind my neighborhood. You know, it was a 50 acres, 25 jobs, but it was taking water, three to four million gallons of water a day and natural gas to make electricity. Well, I'm glad we fought it. I'm glad, you know, they backed out because now those power plants are being dismantled nationwide. Because it's a waste of two natural resources to make one. But the emissions to that plant would have flowed all over Albany, clear up to Millersburg. And so hindsight, yep, it was the right choice. But at that time, many people thought it was a job. Who cares? Who cares about the environment? It was a job. So I've always been that we need to really make sure it's a really good fit for the community. And it's really going to help our economic base.
Thank you very much, Sharon. That's great, quite, great answer. Your next, the next person is Counselor Smith.
Hello, Sharon.
Hello.
Go way back. What brought you to Albany? What do you love about living here? And how does your experience in Albany align with the city's mission and vision statements?
I had to kind of laugh. I had no choice to come here. I was a baby. So I didn't have any choice, but no, it was, you know, I've been here my whole life and you know me, I love Albany. It's been the community that I've been, you know, passionate about all these years and, and mostly our community's character. It's a fun community and that's what I've always wanted it to have. And that's what's kept me here too. It's when I got involved years back was to make sure it was going to be that great community for us to enjoy. So, and with the mission and vision statement, yeah, I'm, I am aligned with it quite well. I was a part of establishing our mission and vision statement. So, but what was great too with our mission and vision statement, years back, we used to just do goal setting days. And we'd set about 20 or 50 goals and maybe accomplish one. And it would be an all day, eight, 10 hour day session to set those goals. Some of you would remember it. And then it was Ed Hodney and Wes Hare that switched us to the strategic plan. And that is such a great living and working document that we have. It helps staff to be able to have that guidance from the council. But it's all a part of the mission and vision statement that built that strategic plan for the council to be able to set the goals and objectives and staff's able to be able to use that document. So, but yeah, so yep, nope, I've been here a long time, Marilyn, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, next up is Counselor Olson.
Okay, Sharon, why do you want to be a city councillor? And why would the residents in your ward vote for you? And why should we choose you to be on our council?
So at first, you know, I didn't think it's like, oh, I wouldn't go back to council, but no, I am looking forward to it. But the voters would support me. They did actually. So I received 13,500 votes citywide. And within Ward Two, I added up all of the precincts in Ward Two and my votes, and they were actually more than Ray's votes. So I believe the voters would still support me with that. But also we need to balance, you know, representation in our community and in Ward Two. So Alex and Ray live in the same neighborhood and there has not been a councillor outside of that neighborhood around LBCC since Ralph Reed 10 years ago. So there's eight more precincts in Ward Two, east of the freeway, I mean, east of the railroad tracks. And so I, I think we need to be able to have representation on this section of the, of Ward Two also. But, but why do I want to be on the city council? And as you guys probably know, that's what I chose years back. And, you know, when I was a child, you've heard this story over and over that it was just a fun community, loved the downtown. We lived on Columbus Street then. We'd ride our bicycle down downtown every Saturday, you know, to just go hang out and enjoy the shopping or have a Coke and french fries. And, you know, nowadays you wouldn't hardly send your kids in an elementary age or middle school even to go riding downtown on your bicycle. But, but then, you know, when I got married, moved into our house and after having my daughter, I saw, you know, this community is becoming very blighted. So a lot of the citywide, it was just blighted. And that's when I got on the budget committee in the end of 95. And then I thought, you know what? I'm going to run for a city council and it's like, make, make that change. And it's been a work in progress for all these years. So, but also kind of like, why to choose me if, for one thing, and why to, you know, for this position is I would take no training or any demands on our staff. As you know, our staff is really kind of overloaded and short on staff now. And we've got some serious issues to tackle and we've got a lot of tasks that need to get done. And so I wasn't ready to leave the council. I wanted to still kind of get some stuff of more of us on a solid foot and a lot of unfinished business. And so, so I'm looking forward to be able to have us get moving things forward. But, but I, I would not take any, many demand on staff. And when it even comes to certain things, that would be Facebook or questions, well, I think I can probably answer them, so. Does that answer your question, Dick?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Let's go to the next person will be Counselor Novak.
That's a pretty good segue into my question, actually. So what do you consider to be the top three issues facing Albany and what steps would you take to address them?
Okay, seeing that question, I thought there's a lot of things that need to be done. So it's kind of hard to pick and choose, but I'd say the top three, COVID, getting through that and also with that coincides with our budget deficit. So that really was a hindrance this past year. And we need to really be thinking strongly, getting us through this budget, making sure we're able to keep our services, our level of services whole. The other big concern is, I think is going to be the impacts from Measure 110. If we are going to have a rise in our crime, you know, even, even the state now is thinking of shutting down, what, three prisons? And it's just going to end up, you know, you know, our police are going to be arresting folks. They know need to go to prison and there's not going to be the space for it. But decriminalizing meth and heroin is just going to be such a rise in property crime and that crime. And that's my really big, biggest fear on that. But, and then Councilor Novak would be housing growth. So I was hoping we could really kind of tackle this this year and really get some good kind of roundtable discussions going on it. But what I, what I wanted to do, which all of you would do, is we need to get in contact with our congressional leaders. Since now there's a new administration nationwide, maybe we can get some changes to the HUD voucher program. So I had mentioned it before to our congressional leaders, but there just wasn't the leadership at the national level to get things done. If they could be able to modify that, the HUD voucher program, that would free up, that would be able to get so many people that would be homeless or needing housing to get into housing to afford it right now. So part of that, for that HUD voucher, voucher program would be there's, as you know, there's a cap on what a voucher would pay on rents. We've, we've added about 1,000 apartments in our inventory the past several years. And those rents are above that cap, so nobody can rent them. But if the voucher could be modified, that a person could be able to pay that gap difference. And, but they don't allow them to pay that gap difference. And also to share a housing voucher. So if you've got three people working minimum wage, they need the housing voucher to be able to pay for rent, but, and then be able to share, if it's a three bedroom apartment, share those housing vouchers. And that's another thing that could be changed. That would really help, you know, with the, the housing crisis on that. But, but also, you know, I, I, I really don't want to see us going in the path of just reacting to the state demands and the nationwide demands. It's a housing shortage every state in this nation. Except for one third of the states do, one third are losing population. So it's like California moving here to find cheaper housing. So are we to react to that and allow that and be able to add more housing just to add, to alleviate their problem? They need to be addressing their problems in their states. But I ju, I really think we need a good roundtable discussion over it and it goes with the cost of growth too. But it all starts with what is the vision, everyone's vision for our valley? What do you want it to look like in 50 years? Some people want to pave it over, you know, some people do not want to pave it over. That's what really needs to set is that vision for this whole valley. And when it comes to housing, for more housing, because all of that more housing shoves more cost onto all residents and puts more demand on our public services. Did I give you enough there?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Counselor Karpinski. Counselor Karpinski.
You're muted.
Thank you. Is the best way to finish the Urban Renewal District CARA program.
Okay, yeah. So that's another reason I went back on board. There's a lot of unfinished business. And as you know, I was a part of the beginning of, of, or CARA. But what I feel, there's not a lot of money left. But I, I really feel strongly that we need to be supporting the St. Francis. I know some people don't in the community, some do, but that is such a significant historic, you know, structure. And, I mean, it's our history and I, I, I hope we can do all we can to be able to preserve the St. Francis. Also, the, the Wells Fargo, I don't know if maybe the scope should be smaller, that, but, you know, what we can do to get, get, get that reused as the Wells Fargo. But the waterfront, I mean, if you even look and you look down Water Street, it, there's a lot of blight through there. And we need to be able to do some enhancements on the waterfront. We can't afford the full scope. But what can we do to be able to make it look more appealing? Those are ugly parking lots, folks. Can we fix them up? Can you make it at least safe? So if you're going to walk from the Penny's parking lot over to Monte Park, you got a sidewalk to walk on, you know, it's just, it's not really a safe section. But I'd love to see something for, for kids is a new playground, move the playground, get a little splash pad or just a little fountain, but bring more kids, more families, you know, down to the waterfront. So, so there's not a lot of money, but there's still a lot that needs to be done. So looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Do you feel it would be beneficial for the council to have annual joint meetings with the chamber, the downtown association, the visitor's association, greater Albany Public Schools? And any other applicable organizations to get their views and ideas regarding what's happening in Albany?
So good question, Bessie. And as you, you'll remember, we used to always meet with the school district every year. So, and, but we didn't this past year, you know, because of COVID. And I don't know if we even did the year before. So I know it has been a couple of years since we met with the school district. And we used to with Benton County, that was kind of on an annual basis or about every other year. Lynn County, I think we only have maybe once or twice in all my years. So I think it'd be great to get with those other governmental agencies. But we do have counselors, you know, as liaisons for all of the nonprofit agencies or outside agencies that we support. And so, you know, I don't know by having joint meetings, I would worry about that staff workload that that would put on staff. Because the more meetings that you put outside, we still have to have staff there. We still got to have a recorder and all of that. And it's a public meeting, but, but I think once we can maybe, you know, have our staff have a lighter workload, we can be able to add, add more to that. So, but, but we do need to get back with the school district as a really good, good one to, to meet with, so.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up would be me. As a city councillor, you'll be required to make decisions on a wide variety of topics that affect the citizens of Albany. What relationships and or resources or tools we rely upon to help you develop your informally good discipline?
Okay, well, I don't think I'll need any tools or resources to bring me up to speed on city government. But as you know, there's always new issues that arise. You never know. There's always something new that comes up. But that's what's great about our work sessions, where we can get the whole council there and get everybody up to speed, you know, on, on a certain issue that might come up. And, but there's times we have repeated issues I've seen over the years. So it's sort of nice to be able to kind of have that history too. So we don't put too much energy into something that we've already tackled before. But, but also for any, you know, the resources, tools, I know which staff member to call for anything. If it's somebody complaining on trains, I'm going to know it's Ron Irish, you know, so, so I won't. So, um, so I won't be a demand on staff. Um, and, and when it comes to certain citizens' concerns and calls and all that, um, I feel confident in being able to answer them like I have before. And then, but if I, if something new, um, need to tap somebody in, I know which staff member that I can, you know, be able to, um, assist that citizen, so. But I don't base my decision on who lobbies me. I'm very, I'm serious with my decisions and I don't feel beholden to anybody. Um, but I, um, base my decisions on the community overall, and that's what most folks should be, is by the community overall. And, um, but, but as I've told kind of many, many citizens over the years, many people, many friends, you know, what we make as decisions, we want to make sure future residents, the next generation is proud of those decisions. So, um, you know, just an example with our police station and fire station, you know, we know 20 years from now, you know, do you think people will say those are a mistake? You know, we're going to know they're going to think that was the right choice that we made. Now, the, the, um, previous, um, police station, as soon as it was built, they were out of space. So, you know, it shows there that decision wasn't quite right because they didn't make it build enough for growth. And we, we, we made the police station big enough for growth. So, um, so it takes tough decisions we have to make. And, um, but, um, but no, I, um, if I don't know an answer, I'll know where to find it. So, thank you.
Um, I think, oh, Council Smith is next. Excuse me.
Albany's population continues to evolve. How could city government better connect with traditionally underrepresented?
Excuse me, Council Novak, my Council Smith, I can barely hear you.
Again?
Yes.
At least I got the question.
Can you hear me now?
I can barely, but I can read along with you.
This is ridiculous. Okay, let me see. Adjust this here. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Albany's population continues to evolve. How could city government better connect with traditionally underrepresented individuals or groups to make Albany more welcoming and inclusive?
Well, we established that, as you know. Marilyn was back in 2007 when we formed our Human Relations Commission. And I've always been proud of that commission. I think it's always been a great tool to have. The folks that have been involved have been wonderful. They would attend all the River Rhythms concerts, have a booth there, they would be, you know, helping out with the festival Latino. And, um, and it's been a great resource for us. And, and it's made it easier even for, you know, the council, for the city council and all staff by having that, you know, um, by having that commission to be able to reach out, um, and to make sure people know that we're a very welcoming community. Um, so I'm hoping the HRC gets back up and running again soon. But, and also our staff is wonderful, you know, for their, um, the outreach they do, social media, really getting the word out there on how we are that welcoming, um, community. But also I kind of, I worry about, um, with it, when the HRC is started back up, having too much demands on staff, because I know Marilyn, you used to help assist with that commission and also Jorge, and we lost Jorge. And so, um, I've no idea how Peter is going to be staffing it, but I know it needs to be done. But we just need to probably make sure once they get up and running, it's not going to be a high demand on staff for that. Thank, thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
So, Council Olson, you are next up with Sharon.
Yes, Sharon, what is your opinion of an experience with dealing with Oregon's land use laws? And what importance would you put on the city's land use planning efforts?
So, Dick, you stole my question that I always had every time that we went through these council interviews. I was the one that always took on that question. So I thought it was like, at least someone. Yeah, but at least someone's got that question out there. That was always, um, a good question, very important. I've always said, when it comes to land use, you can really get a good indication of the person you're interviewing, of their overall view over a community when it comes to land use. So, um, but yeah, I've been very, very involved. Um, and, um, I've always been very strong with land use laws and, um, but I've been very supportive and more advocating for well-managed growth too. Back in the late 90s, I helped, um, get our annexation meter, our vote for annexation measure in our charter, um, was part of our Great Neighborhoods program, still proud of that today. Um, I feel we're having sort of some, you know, pushback on it, um, which, you know, which I would hate to see that we would, um, fall back to losing some of those codes that really focused on our community's livability. Um, I've been even, the land use issues that took place for the fix the measure 37 when we got measure 49, I was up at the Capitol, we had hearings three times a week up there for four months, being able to listen to all the, the hearings and hearing everybody on both sides of that issue when it comes to Oregon's land use. But I refer to land use laws as the people's protection policy. And some people might not see it that way, but I look at what you do to your property might have a negative impact on somebody else's property. So they're there for, um, for everyone's protection. So, um, but we do have challenging times ahead. And, um, since the state took away that annexation measure and, um, now they got, um, House Bill 2001, um, taken away our single family zoning. So I really worry about our future land use laws. It's out of our hands when the state just kind of whittles away with it. But, um, so there's going to be some challenging times coming up, um, with our Oregon land use.
I agree.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks for the response. Next up is Councilor Novak.
Thank you. Sharon, as a city councillor, you know this, you're representing all citizens in your ward, citizens who have a range of backgrounds, positions, and viewpoints on city business. How does your background and life experience help you in dealing with individuals who may see things differently than you?
So it's a good question there, um, councillor. So I have been many years representing all citizens, all walks of life, and with different backgrounds and all different income levels. So as a former Ward Two City, you know, councillor, I assisted city residents, actually citywide, but my part of town is not the high-valued part of town that I have represented, and I have lived my whole life in too. Um, but no, I have been able to have experience and I'm really, I, I feel rewarded having experience with such a diverse, um, amount of citizens over the years. I remember having, um, coffee one time, and it was actually, he was the, he was a felon, he was a sex offender felon who just got out of prison. He wanted to meet with me and he just wanted to know what can he do? He wanted to change his life around and get on the right foot. I remember meeting him for, for three hours, you know, being able to help kind of give him some encouragement and some guidance, you know, um, some new avenues in his life. But I have met with many people that have mental health needs. Um, I've assisted, you know, I've helped people homeless get jobs and housing. Um, I re, I remember one homeless person who was from New York and he was, he was a felon and he wanted to meet me at City Hall because he had some ideas. And, and as we're, I, I would meet him upstairs, as we'd come walking down the stairs, one of our police officers walks by and he sees me walking with him and he looks, does another double take look, and his eyes about bugged out, it's like, what is Sharon doing with this guy? But, but it, it helped him and, you know, and him and I became, you know, friends and, um, but so, no, all, all folks with all income levels. But, but I've helped residents in our most high-valued neighborhoods, um, and then many with, um, folks, um, for, you know, in multifamily housing. And, but I think that what really helps me too has been my involvement with Albany Partnership for over 20 years. And it has provided me that full understanding of what it's like for somebody to be on low income. Um, I've established programs with that, our Life Skills Housing and our Step Forward Housing, it's to help bring people to move them towards being self-sufficient. Um, so I've been able to see, and I see the difficulties it is for people to be able to keep a roof over their head. And so we need to always take into consideration, um, of everyone and their income, their income levels too. Um, but, um, but, and also when it comes to the, the cost of living. But that's why, to me, I've always focused on what, um, that we need to always be looking at the cost of growth too. And because that does put that extra burden on everyone's income too. So, but, does that help? Yeah.
So last, uh, no, excuse me, Council Johnson has another question for you.
Or did you skip? Did you skip?
Oh, shoot, I skipped right? I'm sorry.
You guys are probably getting tired of all these questions.
Council Ray, I'm sorry, Council Captain.
I was worried you guys were going to start falling asleep on me, I bet, as long as, as long as these hours have gone for you.
Please touch on your experience or understanding of public sector budgeting and financial planning. Albany's income isn't keeping up with expenses. The city has already made many service level cuts and expects to make more. Would you support a utility fee for additional, additional revenue as other cities in Oregon have done?
Great question, and that is like part of when I talked about the budget, this is something that we have to tackle. And we tried to the last couple of years, um, did not make much grounds. Um, but I do know the budget, so, um, over a quarter century worth of our budgets, and I'd need no training to, um, um, learn anything about Oregon, um, you know, public meetings, you know, or budget law. So, um, but as I've kind of stated over the years, is our property taxes do not even fully fund police and fire. It takes all other revenue sources to, you know, support all of our, um, city services. So, as I mentioned, the last few years, when we had the discussion over utility fee, was we had two paths to take, more cuts for more revenues. But other words, we're reducing our level of service. It breaks my heart to see how much that we have been cutting back the last few years. We had to cut way back when it came to the Great Recession, and we never was able to fully build that back up. So, um, when it came to campaign time, I really think for a utility fee, I'd really like to see explored. Um, I had mentioned it because I couldn't bring this up the last couple of years because the council did not want to go down the path of a utility fee. But looking at the cost of living increase for our sewer and water that we do on the annual basis, we take that amount and waive it for a year or two and, um, establish, um, what that increase would be to the consumer, you use that for the utility fee to start it without, it's, it's not good time to do the utility fee during our COVID time. This would be kind of weighting that cost of living increase, um, for water and sewer and divert, and having that increase establish a new utility fee. The public work side could push back on some capital improvement projects for a couple of years to be able to offset, um, the less amount of revenue that they would receive on that. I don't know if it'll work, but I have no idea what the numbers are because we could not provide, you know, direction to staff to come up and crunch those numbers. I think that's the first step we should look at in crunch, and seeing what those numbers are, and then seeing what we're needing to have for the utility fee, um, to get that established. But we're going to have to do something. We can't keep pushing it off. So I, I do not want to see our level of service keep declining.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Um, and now it's Council Johnson's turn.
All right, great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, what are your feelings about leveraging public and private partnerships to advance city projects or to achieve the city's objectives?
So I think it's great to use, and as you can remember, we did that with Talking Water Gardens. So we pretty much saved Wachang because they needed to have a solution for their wastewater affluent. And so they partnered with us in, um, paying for part of Talking Water Gardens for their, um, wastewater, um, if, you know, affluent, um, that they, you know, um, that they were demanded from DEQ. So that was one project. Um, sometimes some public-private partnerships might not be great, just like, you know, Councilor Olson will state about the ambulance, you know, service years ago was a big failure. Um, and then we partnered member with LBCC. I mean, it costs us the money, but we partnered with them and the metals industry to be able to come up with programs for training, um, um, on the job training and to be able to give those, um, um, help the trades industry with jobs. Um, that was a, that, that's a success in being able to do that type of partnership. Um, but I'm not, or do you have any particular project you were thinking?
No, not, no.
Okay, yeah. So no, I mean, they're great when opportunities come to us, I think we should explore it. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, the last question for you, Sharon, is, do you have any questions or comments for us?
Uh, no, the only comment, I was surprised looking through the questions, there was nothing on homelessness. So I thought there'd be a question about the home, on, on homeless, so. But I think you've got plenty of other questions that everybody in all the candidates had, you know, had, you know, were able to answer, but that was just one thing. I do think it's going to be sort of an ongoing issue, and I mean, it's just nationwide and, but, and statewide, but it's, we're going to still have some demands on services, you know, to address homelessness. But we've done a lot in Albany, um, proud of what we've been able to accomplish in serving the homeless on that. Do you have any questions for me?
We, we ran out of our lot of questions for you. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Uh, you're the last candidate, and I believe the next step is, uh, going through deliberations. I do have something to read. Should I read it now or should I wait, uh, Peter?
No, you can, uh, you can read it now. It's, uh, um, if you're ready to go into deliberations, are you, does anybody need a break or?
Yes, why don't we take about a five minute?
Five minutes?
Okay, we'll take a five minute break and we'll come back. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, thank you, councillors and mayor, thank you. Um, so how do, how does the public watch us then if we don't have the go-to meeting?
They're watching on, uh, Facebook and YouTube. Right now, there's, uh, 31 people watching on Facebook and 20 on YouTube.
Okay, so the YouTube is off our city website?
Yes. Well, you can reach it through there, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
Karen. Um, it's about 10 minutes, guys, want to do that? Council? Five, 10 minutes, okay. See you in 10. Five, ten minutes, okay. See you in ten. Also wish to uh wish to take a short break. We did that. So we're back now. As a reminder, the mayor is able to put forward a motion as uh also has a vote in these proceedings. Following deliberation, my recommendation is that the council first determine the top two candidates through a roll call vote with each council member putting forward their first and second choices. Our top two candidates are identified. Once our top two candidates are identified, we have the opportunity to additional discussion if needed. When ready to do so, one of the councillors can or I can make a motion to appoint one of the top two candidates. If the motion is seconded, I will ask for a roll call vote. If the votes are a result of the tie, I will entertain a motion to appoint the other top candidate. If the council is unable to secure a majority vote for one of the candidates, the council will deliberate on how to move forward. Uh, this may include additional time for deliberations, a second round of interviews for the top two candidates, or some other process determined determined by the council. If a motion to appoint one of the applicants receives a majority vote of the council, the individual's select will be sworn by the city clerk tomorrow. Is there that clear for one?
I think so.
Okay. So the next thing we do, we have a recommendation?
Top two?
Yes.
Mayor, remember uh uh what what you would do is you would do a roll call vote. Holly is standing by to take to record the names that you give as your as your top two. I would say, don't say, you know, that they're in any order. It's just that you would pick candidate A and C as top two.
Okay.
And Holly, I would invite you to add anything if you if you like at this point.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, so if the council feels that now is the time they're ready to go ahead and do that roll call vote, I can I can read out the names and you can give me your uh two candidates who you would wanna put forward as your finalists?
So we're just gonna say like A, B, C, D?
But give me the names of the two individuals.
Okay, or just the two individuals, okay.
Oh, okay.
Now, this is, now let me say something. This is not to stop you from having any kind of discussion right now if you want, but this is to try to help you move the process along. If you if you feel like you need some discussion, please feel free to engage in that. But if you feel ready to identify the top two, then that might speed along your process, and Holly's ready to record that. And the way I would recommend that, Mayor, is if you just run down the alphabetical list of the councillors and and then when that councillor's called, they'll give their top two.
So you are, are we ready for a roll call vote, council?
I can do that, yeah. I'm ready. The top two, I can.
Counselor Olson?
Counselor Olson, you're muted.
There he goes. Are you ready? Have you identified your top two, Counselor Olson?
And yes, and you want the first names of my top two, I'm guessing.
I get, no, I'm just checking with everybody first before we do that, okay?
I'm ready.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Ready.
Ready. Counselor Johnson?
I'm ready.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
I'm as ready as well. So would you like to do a roll call vote, Holly?
Oh, you're muted.
Happens to the best of us.
Yep, it sure does. Okay. Uh, Mayor Johnson?
Bartholomew and Lally. What'd you say?
Olson?
Amanda and Scott.
Hello back?
Stacy and Scott.
Oh. Kupczynski?
Stacy and Scott.
Johnson? Bessie Johnson?
Stacy and Scott.
Since I'm the only one left, I'm guessing you're asking me, and it's Stacy and Scott.
Okay. Stacy Bartholomew has five votes. Scott Lally has six votes. They are your top two candidates. Okay.
So council, would you like to deliberate or would you like to do another roll call vote?
Oh, I I think maybe a little deliberation because I really do, I could, I see good points in both of them. And I don't, you're you're saying we don't necessarily have to go with Scott because he got six over Stacy's five or?
We just chose the top two. We just chose the top two.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, if if any, in my opinion, I, one thing I liked about Scott was he says that he knows what he's getting into, and he knows that as soon as he gets there, he's got a background back and that he's gonna, he has to listen to both sides and make a decision. It's not like, okay, I'm there and I've got the idea and I know I'm gonna make a change. So I kind of like that about him, I think. And I I think he has the professionalism and the um, I don't know, the his his demeanor is very good to me, and I like that he has the sense of humor.
Bingo. That's exactly what I picked up on. I thought it was refreshing to not just be so serious about a lot of things, which were which they're very, very serious things we're dealing with.
Yes.
You can't have a little bit of humor injected into it. You're gonna drive yourself right into the ground. So I appreciated having a little bit of humor injected into it.
Me too, yeah.
Marilyn? Counselor Smith?
Uh, I am, I think equally impressed with both candidates, which makes it not not that much easier. I um I was I was very impressed with Stacy's um demeanor, her thoughtfulness, her um her way of assessing her her love for her neighborhood.
Yeah.
Possibly put your mic up to your mouth a little bit closer.
Oh, sure. Okay, all right. Does this matter?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, okay. I I I was impressed with her love for her neighborhood and her. Uh, it it sounds like she um has the same kind of thing in mind that I've talked about, um, use taking advantage of a kitchen cabinet. People that you know, people that you work with, people that you're related to, to bounce ideas off of them. Um, I I really um I I liked her um uh her self-awareness and um recognizing what her strengths are and where she could continue to learn. And um there are many of us who are new and 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 both of these candidates would be new to this and and know that they're they're jumping off a tall, a tall rock. And so anyway, I I I also appreciate Scott's sense of humor, and he has um a remarkably diverse background, which is uh a a broad range of life experience, which could be very helpful. So that's where I'm at.
One one more point uh I'll say about Scott is uh it impressed me coming up on our fiftieth anniversary that he brought in the fact that he was, you know, talked over with his family to everybody knows what understands what he may be getting into as far as the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought that was a good thing.
That stood out to me as well because it is a big commitment. I mean, there's more meetings than I thought, you know? And I thought I knew what I was getting into, but I I appreciate that about him, and I have to echo Marilyn. I with regard to Stacy, I really, I loved when she said that she looks in on her ninety-three-year-old neighbor, and I just really appreciated her heart, you know, I um and I happen to say I'm really sad. I didn't have my camera set properly, so I couldn't see who was speaking. So the whole, I don't even know what she looks like. She's the only one. I have no idea what she looks like because I couldn't see her. But um if we if we put her on, I guess I will see her. Um, anyway, I I appreciate them both, and to me, it's a really tough call between the two of them. I I see real strengths in both of them, and I I would say that I appreciated what I could hear of Stacy's demeanor since I she's the only one, like I say, I figured it out right after her, had it set my camera so I could at least see who was talking. Because on the iPad, it doesn't show you everyone, which is why it's a good idea to set it to speaker. You set it to whoever's speaking, then you can at least see them, but.
Something that impressed me, something that impressed me about all four candidates was that they they all have a lot to offer, and they all are people that regardless of what the decision is, among us, we need to keep those people involved and get and give them opportunities to to um to help out.
Look, they all bring an obvious passion to the table.
Yes.
Let's give Counselor Olson a chance to actually talk.
And he said that this is something that I'd like to get involved with or re-involved with, and uh that that's a credit to everybody, so.
So I we haven't given Counselor Johnson or Counselor Olson an opportunity to speak on on the candidates. So the Counselor Johnson or Counselor Olson, you have something?
Go ahead, Dick.
Uh, yeah, I I liked Amanda. I liked her, oh, you might say, hard scrabble background, where she has suffered the uh the effects of uh uh not having enough income to do what so many of the rest of us have been able to do in our background. And yet she's um apparently a successful or becoming a successful businesswoman. And uh I like that about her, and I liked her definitive attitude about solving some of the problems, uh particularly along um the idea of uh keeping Albany an enjoyable place and um being uh aware that we need to be concerned about diversity. Uh, I think both um um educational diversity, um um background diversity and um and so forth. So um I I really did like Amanda. And I did like Stacy also, you know, that she um um she's, of course, very concerned about the homeless, and uh we can do some about that, but it's really a national thing where we get the um they get income from those who can most afford to provide income for that kind of problem. So uh I guess those are my top two choices.
So Counselor Johnson, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Yeah, I'm on. I think Scott had a pretty, uh, I mean, I like Stacy too because I I like Marilyn. I love her passion. I mean, she was, she was, she wasn't just giving lip service. She really cares. And I agree. I think that we we should, whoever we don't choose, we need to make them aware of things available and get them involved. Um, I just think that well, you know, I think they all pretty much admitted that they didn't have budget experience, but um none of us did when we started, and at least nothing with of this mag magnitude. Um, and that he wants to have uh the city to have financial stability, and he is worried about the housing and the homeless and the livability of the city. So um I just think he's a very impressive man, and I think either Stacy or Scott. And some of the things that Amanda said, Dick, I agreed with. I mean, I've been where she was, and so I can understand her passion. And so I can understand her passion where like, hey, you know, not, a buck to you isn't anything, but a buck to somebody who can't, uh, put groceries on the table is important. So, um, but I, I, I think, yeah, I think I know who I'm gonna vote for. Thank you.
So I'll add my comments now. I like both of the candidates. Um, I like both of their passion. Uh, one of the things that impressed me about Stacy is that she's actually doing something about the homeless issue. She's not giving lip service to it. She's actually doing it. And I think that's a, and she's, she's actually putting boots on the ground. And I like Scott a great deal. I pointed Scott to the Indian Relations Commission. And I, I think that of the, of the people that are facing what we're facing, I think she would be, uh, my selection. Uh, she's, I think she's level-headed. She has a great sense of humor. She has, she's aware of what's going on in the city, the temperature with the homeless community. And the unhoused community is a big deal for all of us. But I think her being, um, our advocate and, and driving that with her projects and the things that she's trying to accomplish, I think that she's been a great asset for the city council. And you've seen her, she's easy to work with, I feel. And, um, I like Scott. I like all the candidates did a great job. But my first choice would be, uh, Stacy Bartholomew.
Uh, Mayor, I wanted to, to also add that, um, both, uh, both those candidates had done a lot of, uh, background before they applied. And clearly have, they've been, they've been talking to staff. They've been talking to, um, other councillors. And they, they are, have done a lot of preparation for that appointment.
You can definitely tell.
And then the, the, the other thing that I wanted to add is in keeping all of the candidates involved, it's important to remind the appointees and those who are not a, the appointee and the ones who are not appointed, that this is a two-year position, and this position will be up for election in two years.
Correct.
And, um, go for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we have enough information to make a vote?
I think so.
I think so.
Okay.
I, yes. Mayor Johnson, would you like to do this as a roll call vote, or do you want to entertain a motion?
Um, let's go ahead and entertain a motion. I think that's a good idea.
Oh, I, I move that we, um, nominate or elect, uh, Scott Lally, uh, for city council.
I second that.
Um, so if, if I was feeling a little more strongly towards Stacy than Scott, that.
So I would, I would say, do we, um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So now we do a roll call or something, so we're real.
Those opposed?
No, I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed. I just.
Wait, Holly?
So that is a three to three, from based on the responses that I heard. I have, uh, Novak Olson and, and Smith voting no on that motion. That results in a tie, you can entertain a different motion. You can take opportunity to deliberate further.
So Nov- Novak Olson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we, um, nominate Stacy as our, uh, our replacement.
Wait, wait, one, one second here. One, there's one second. You, and this is why you should probably do a roll call vote. I think that what, what, um, the results of that vote was, was not, uh, three to three. And, and, uh, Counsel Novak, don't think about it as a no vote or a vote against somebody. You're just voting, uh, for the person that you, uh, want to select. If that's, if the motion is not for the person you wanna select, then you'll have to just vote no. That doesn't mean you're against them. That means that you want the other person to have that position.
Well, this is a good opportunity to remind people too that according to our charter, um, a silent vote is counted as an affirmative vote. So if you don't, if you don't open your mouth, you're voting your best.
Okay.
We had a motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
We didn't have a second, did we?
Yes.
Well, are you talking, are we talking about still on the one for Scott or the new one for Stacy?
The one for Scott was, wasn't a three to three.
Correct. I, I think it was four to two. I think it was two votes yes, yea, and four nay.
Correct. That's what I heard.
Johnson, why don't I go ahead and take a roll call vote on the original motion?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Scott Lally. Okay. Counsel, Counsel Olson?
I'm voting no on Scott Lally.
Counselor Novak?
Oh, I'm so torn. But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm voting no.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
No.
Motion failed four to two.
That's sticky.
I feel like Solomon splitting the baby here. This is.
Yeah. I know.
What is my next step?
You can entertain, you can entertain another motion.
I believe.
I believe one of the councillors had put a motion forward. They may want to go ahead and put that forward again for clarification.
Wait, Counsel Olson?
Yeah, so I'll nominate Stacy Bartholomew.
Wait a second?
Yes, seconded.
Those four?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. That's okay with you?
Yes, it is.
Counsel Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passed four to two.
No.
Yes.
It's three to three, wasn't it?
Four to two.
No, it's four.
It's four to two.
I missed one, I'm sorry.
I voted yes. Stella voted yes. Johnson too voted yes. Smith voted yes. To my count.
So it's four to two, motion passed. So what is my next step, Holly?
You may, you may wish to have the council ratify the four to two vote. That's what we've done in the past.
Counsel, would that direct the vote?
Is there a washing machine or something going on?
I don't know. We have motion to ratify the vote?
I would move to ratify the vote.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 For some, for some history, uh, when, I don't know how it evolved, it may be a different process for whatever reason. Uh, it was then round robin or something like that, so it all came out as a unanimous vote. I would have no problem doing that, uh.
I think that's what we just did, basically.
Just a ratification, the ratification.
Yeah.
I think so. Yeah.
I think it's good to be unified for sure on something like this. I mean, and I would say the same if it was Scott Lally over Stacy, just so y'all know, I totally would. Cause they should, they should know they've got a hundred percent of us.
We ratified six to nothing, or we got six, five to nothing?
Yes. Well, congratulations, council. You have your seventh member.
Yay.
Uh, city, uh, city manager, do you have anything for us before we end the meeting?
No, just to remind you that, uh, Stacy will have to get with, uh, Mary Dibble, the best clerk in Oregon, tomorrow.
You go. Hmm, okay.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, city manager. Thank you, thank you staff for being here tonight. Matt, Polly, Sean, Peter, um, great work, Mary. Um, and the next meeting's gonna be tomorrow night at seven fifteen, and I call the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you all for participating.
Radio. Thank you. Boy, that was hard.